Dave can lead trivia.
All right, we're ready to go. We'll start the call, the council work session from Monday, July 21st to order at 6:05 PM. Ask the city recorder to call them.
Council President Briggs.
Here.
Counsel Beriantos.
Yes.
Counsel Blosser.
Here.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counsel Hozapple is excused. Counsel Jantsch.
Counsel Schilling.
Here.
Counsel Shane.
Here.
Counsel Spivey.
Here.
Right, that's eight of us, plus the mayor. All right, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. So tonight, we just have the one item on the work session, and that is kind of a follow-up to our police station project. And back in a few months, a few months ago, after the bond measure in May had failed to garner the support from the community, we kind of did a follow-up to recap kind of what went well, but didn't, what are the options we want to look at? And so the council kind of gave us some feedback and direction there. Since then, we've done some research, working with our architecture team and our financial advisors to just kind of pull that information together. And so you have that included in your packet with attachments A through E. Attachment F is a presentation that architects from Mackenzie put together as well. So you have that in your packet as well. So tonight, we're gonna, is really just an opportunity to kind of go over those different options, the information that was provided. Certainly ask lots of questions tonight. We had, this is our only item on the agenda. We only have the work session tonight. We don't have a regular council meeting, so we can take as much time as needed on this topic. So as we kind of go through, you know, all the information in the packet today, we're kind of, we'll break it down kind of into sections. So we'll start with attachments A and B, which are the detailed cost breakdowns of the $17.2 million project. You asked us to get kind of a third-party cost estimation done. So that was completed by Todd Construction, and that's included as attachment B. So we'll be able to go through both of those and ask all our questions on those kind of two cost estimates for that project. Then we'll follow up on the next item, which is attachment C, and that was the kind of the analysis that was done for the itemizer observer building as it sits today and doing kind of a renovation of that. Ask the questions on that that we have. Then we'll move to item D, which is the single-story building option analysis. So there's some cost numbers on what it would be roughly per square foot for a single-story building as compared to the two-story structure, which we already put out to the voters. And then finally, we'll go on attachment E, which is a financial analysis, looking at the different ways that the project could be financed. We worked with our financial advisor on that, and Cecilia Ward, our finance director, will come up and kind of present on that topic, where again, you can ask lots of questions and hopefully good answers to that tonight. If we're not able to have an answer to one of your questions tonight, we'll certainly write that down and do some follow-up. So you'll be able to get that answer probably at a future meeting. So with that, we'll start with items A and B, and I'll introduce our architecture team. We have Jeff Humphries, the principal on the project, and Kathy to assist here. So we're here, and I'll turn the timer over you, and you can do a little bit more of an introduction than what I gave and jump into the presentation.
Thank you, Brian, Mayor, counselors. Jeff Humphries, I am one of the principals of Mackenzie, and I've dedicated my career to public safety projects. So it's a assessment of the design and delivery of police and fire facilities.
My name's Kathy Bowman. I was the project manager on the project and hope to continue as so moving forward. I've been in with Mackenzie for a little over 12 years and been primarily focused on public safety facilities as well.
I've been with Mackenzie a little more than 12 years. Okay, so we wanted to give you a quick overview and give you information on the two-story scheme, which was presented to the community for a vote. And so this is the site diagram. It's essentially an L-shaped building. It is a two-story building. In this diagram here, you can see the ground floor is only occupied on the left side of the, of the site diagram. And then it's cantilevered over, the second story is cantilevered over as it goes to the city hall, and covering up some of the parking associated with that. So it provides weather protection and screening associated with that from Court Street. And then if we go to the floor plans, this is what that floor plan would look like. So again, on the left side, that is entrance from the, for the public on the green, and then the back of house is all the other colors, if you will. And then moving on to the second floor, we can come back to any of this. I'm just giving you a high overview so we can get to the cost. So this is the second floor. This is the business end of the station. So you have your detectives up here, you have patrol, you have admin, lockers, and the break room areas associated with that. So that is the design that we came up with and met the operational needs for the PD.
Long-term.
And then we went through a process of developing what the character of the building would look like. This is ultimately what was selected as far as the exterior to try to fit into the context of the downtown and the historic nature of, of your community. So with that information, now we have a site plan, we had a floor plan, we had a character sketch, then we developed what we call a preliminary project description or a PPD. It's a early specification for the project. It outlines what the structure is, what all the materials are going to be, what the mechanical systems are going to be, so that that can be used to inform what the cost is going to be. So now in front of you is a breakdown of the cost. So the cost estimator, once we pulled those materials and gave them to the cost estimator, they forecasted what the construction costs were going to be. And I wanted to highlight a few different things to you for that. On this page here, the cost is broken into three different fields. Blue is the construction cost, which we're going to talk about. And then the next two are the soft costs. So the green field is consultant costs, and the orange field is owner costs that would include furniture, permit fees, and those sorts of things. But focusing on the blue, what goes into effect or comes into effect related to the cost related to construction is this is an essential facility. It has to meet prevailing wage requirements, and it was forecast to be a CMGC delivery. So that would be a construction manager, general contractor, as a result of the complexities associated with the project. So those things, those three elements, have an impact on what the cost is for the project. What we were forecasting is what we would expect the project to be as far as a range goes. So there's two columns. You can see there, there's a low and there's a high. And our expectation was the project would come in between those two numbers. But I believe the number that we used for going out for the bond measure was based on the high, the worst-case scenario.
Since we're on that subject, a question on that subject about specifically the, the delta between the low and the high numbers, what sorts of contingencies that do or don't happen are responsible for that, that delta? And more, in particular, do those contingencies fall mostly in the blue, the green, or the orange part of the picture?
That's a really good question. So the large, largely the differences between the high and low are based on contingencies, right? We have figured a lot out on the project with the site plan, the floor plan, the preliminary project descriptions. So what we did is we took what the baseline numbers were, and we applied a contingency to it. And the contingency is aimed at the things that just haven't been figured out yet. They don't need to be figured out yet. They will be in the future. And so if you, I gotta zoom in there. Can you?
Yeah.
So if we, could you go over to the left side so we can see the notes there? So yeah, thank you. So you can see the ranges of the percentages here. Now that we've zoomed down, I apologize. My eyesight's just not that good. So for each one of those different categories, you can see on the low side, it has a baseline of, the first category is 5%, and on the high side is, is 8%. And each of those things are basically just forecasting a higher percentage of what the, what the contingency would be. Now, if we scroll back over so we can see what those elements are. So the hard costs, you can see construction hard cost, that's the building, site development cost, that's the site, and off-site development, there's not a lot there, but there are some public improvements that are going to be required. So we have those broken down into those three categories, and those total the numbers, the low being seen right now at $8.2 million. That is the base construction cost. Now you're going to have a number of margins that are going to be associated with this. So that, the first one is inflation escalation. The project wasn't going to be built until the starting next year. So we forecasted out, that's that 5% to 8% that we're just selecting at. The estimating contingency, that is, that is factoring in the unknowns for the project that haven't been developed yet. And then we have a design contingency, and then we have general conditions. So the design contingency is for, is the design team forecasting a supplemental, if you will, contingency for a design that hasn't been figured out yet. General conditions is what the general contractor will charge on the project. That's to have their superintendent and their project manager on the project through the duration of the project. Again, we carried a baseline on that, and we carry a high and a low variation. And then the CMGC participation, that is the cost to have the general contractor engaged on the project while it's being designed. Because of the complexities of the project, because of material shortages, and because of skilled labor shortages, our recommendation was that you would go through a CMGC delivery. There is a premium associated with that. And so you can see what the premium is that we're showing on that. But it results in a higher-quality delivery of a project. And then the overhead and profit is the next category that's on there. So that's, the contractor is going to be charging for the work that they're actually doing. That's their percentage. And again, there's a variable between the low and the high on that. And then that's what their cost is. The state of Oregon requires a green energy technology to be included within the project. On your project, that was going to be anticipated to be photovoltaic panels to provide electricity. And so that is based on 1.5% of the construction cost. So that's what that variable is there. And it's going to be different based on the construction cost between the high and the low. And then the last one, the last one was a Oregon gross receipts tax. And so that is a percentage based on the values that are above it. Yes, sir.
I think you didn't get to this already, but when you're talking about contingency, I believe you're talking about things that no one can foresee, the estimated value of construction material, the weather, anything, anomalies that come along. Is there a reason why you would have an estimated contingency, design contingency, general conditions? I mean, couldn't that all get covered under one thing? And wouldn't, would it be more prudent to say the design contingency is almost at the high end, almost, all those things be covered under one thing?
That's a really good question. So, so two things. The design contingency and the, and the estimated contingency, we do sometimes combine that, and that could be one thing. It covers both the elements on it. But a lot of times, people want to see, well, what are you guys carrying from a design contingency? If there's an oversight or something hasn't been, what is that number? So that's, we broke it out. But it could be one line item on there. But general conditions is not a, it's not a contingency. That is something that the contractor is charging as a result of having their leadership on the project and guiding the project through construction. So that would be a separate line item.
Best-case scenario, you, you wouldn't even necessarily have to touch the design contingency or the estimation contingency if you got it spot on 100%, right? Is, is that true?
So the design contingency is, is right now, we only have the, the three drawings, right? So we've got a floor plan, a site plan, and a character sketch. And then we had that preliminary project description. There's a lot that still needs to go into the development of it. It will take eight months to design this building, once it's ready to go. And so a lot of this just hasn't been sorted out yet. There's not a way to actually.
It's an anomaly. We don't know what the weather's going to be. We don't know what the price of plumbing, wood, or any of that stuff. So that's why we're doing this, right?
That's right. Yeah.
So, and I'm saying, in a best-case scenario, if your estimate is spot on, we wouldn't even have to touch this, right?
Yes and no. So I would say, just to clarify, contingency is for things that haven't been worked out yet, right? And it's not for escalation. That is a separate number. That is the inflation escalation. That's to compensate for your question related to materials and the cost associated with those. The contingencies, those are going to be for things that are not figured out yet, and/or we get to construction and owner, the owner requests, let's make some changes, right? These are owner-requested changes. That happens all the time. And it could be super small, let's move that light switch over here, this, or keep it big. We've decided we don't want to do the locker room like that anymore. We're going to change it. So we make sure that we carry a number, you carry a number, so that we're not in a situation, when I say we collectively, the city and the design team, in a situation where we're going to be over budget because we can't absorb that cost. Lastly, unforeseen conditions. So the unforeseen conditions is the weather piece that you were just talking about. We don't know if we're going to have extreme hot weather where the crews have to stop because it's unhealthy for them to be out there. We don't know if there's going to be ice storms that, again, it's going to impact their ability to do stuff. And so that's where, for the weather, that's where the, the design contingency and the, sorry, the construction contingency come into play for the unknowns. Lastly, you could also run into a situation where we start digging in the soil, and we find out there's an undisclosed oil tank in there, and we have contaminated soil. And so now, again, we will draw from the contingency.
Trivia.
Yeah.
We'll start the call, the council work session to, from July 21st to order at 6:05 PM. Ask the city recorder to call them.
Here.
Counsel President Briggs.
Here.
Counsel Beriantos.
Yes.
Counsel Blosser.
Counsel Fitzgerald. Here.
Counsel Hozapple is excused.
That's. My, my overall question is, say, if you don't, if the best-case scenario, if you don't have to use any of this, does it come back to the owner, the city? Do we get the refund on it?
Yep, absolutely. Technically, it's not a refund.
Okay. This money we wouldn't pay.
Yeah.
Right. It's not a refund. I'm not a.
It's, it's not a refund, but.
Builder.
Let's say this, that I, the reason why I was saying yes was, was this. As the design starts to evolve, right, what ends up happening is dollars in the, we don't know what is going to happen, but we have a bucket here associated with it. It will move from the unknown to the known, right? So now we know all the flashing is going to be copper on this. That's a premium from aluminum, whatever the thing is, right? So we'll move it from a, we don't know yet, to now we know what it actually is. It sometimes gets to the point where now the cost is not what we were forecasting. It is less than that. But track record usually is, we need the contingency on there. It works itself out, and it doesn't change. The number stays about the same.
Yep. So obviously, we're here to try to build a police station. We're committed to do that. And obviously, the voters don't want to spend that kind of money. We're trying to figure out a way to pull money out. You talked about the CMGC with the 100% drawings. Pretty much no questions. Everything's answered. All the plans, all the specs are right there. We know exactly what we're getting. What if we're willing to take a little risk and enter into an agreement with a, like a design build with a contractor, where you would produce a 40% drawing or a 50%? I don't know what percentage it would be to get us to that point where we would have minimal risk. Can you talk to us about what that looks like and how that would, would play out?
Sure. Yeah. So there are a few different project deliveries. So the state of Oregon mandates that all public projects actually go through a design bid build. And up until maybe about the time the pandemic occurred, I would tell you, that is the least expensive way to deliver a project, hands down. This is the best way to go. Since the pandemic and the shelter in place, we've now ran into super-long lead items. It used to be you could get a generator in a couple of months. Now generators, they're easily more than a year to actually deliver a, a generator for a project. That one small thing seems insignificant on the grand scheme of things for a project, but it really is a big deal. Because if a contractor's thinking that they're going to be, they're going to be ordering the generator two months before the project actually needs to be completed, there's going to be a bust, right? Because it's going to take 14 months for them to actually get this. So to your, your point, the reason why you'd want to go through an alternate delivery is the contractor can order the materials at the beginning of the project. They could even do early work packages. And so materials can actually be ordered well in advance of when they're needed, so that you're not going to run into duration issues as far as how long it's going to take to actually get the material on, onsite. So the state has a process that you could go through, and you could go through a alternative delivery. And an alternative delivery then would allow you to go through either a CMGC or a design build. The CMGC would be, the contractor comes onboard, and they're actually engaged in the design process with the design team. And they, in addition to the designers of looking through and trying to find the best way to do things, they're going to be looking at it from a delivery standpoint. Can we get this material faster than that material? We know because we just delivered this last project. And so they can start to hone the way things get shaped. We're going to, we're going to order this material, do that material, that, that type of strategy. I would argue that there's really not a difference between a CMGC delivery and a design build, a design build delivery. But the difference that there is, is a contractual difference. And with a CMGC delivery, you have a contract with a design team, and you have a contract with a contractor. And a design build delivery, you have one contract, it's with the contractor, and they have their design team on it. Generally speaking, I would say that you're going to get a similar number to a CMGC delivery, but it is an option. If the city wanted to go that way, that could be done. And you'd, essentially, you potentially would save the costs associated or forecasting on there. At least that would be the, the argument of the strategy, trying to.
Do we save some design fees, like electrical design, where the contractor would do his own design, or the HVAC?
Generally speaking, I would say that it's going to wash out. So the contractor, you're not going to see the number for the cost because it's going to be in the cost of construction. And I, a lot of times, what the contractors are doing is their subcontractors for mechanical or electrical, they're hiring the design team to actually do the work for them. So we were just having a conversation with Glumac, who's an MEP firm, and they were sharing with us that 50% of their work is design build work. It's a contractor hiring them to actually finish off the design associated with it. So I think that the cost for the design, it's built in there, one way or another. You're not going to see a huge appreciation for the savings.
The estimating contingency, so that's 10% or 20%. How do you decide that? Is that an industry standard, or is that best practice? Or how do you determine that?
Really good questions. And we have more material to cover here, so I don't want us to get completely sucked into this one. But those, that contingency goes down as the design progresses, because we know more and more that's associated with the project. And so this is the highest it would be, and it generally drops down by about 5% for each of the different phases. So they're typically a three design phases that we would actually go through.
I can add just to that. I was going to say, one of the things that we do take into consideration with contingencies is if there's a renovation component, or if there's a demolition component. And this one, we might carry a little bit higher than industry standard, just because of the risk of tearing down the itemizer building because of its adjacencies to the next property and different things like that. So those are things that we take into consideration, just so that you don't get, have to find extra money later on at any given point.
And the, the questions that you're asking and will be asking through what we're trying to present today are all going to be good questions. And there are ways to reduce cost on the project. What this first part was really just trying to share with you what the costs were and how we got through those costs, and what we generally see as far as costs for these projects and how it's forecasted, and how it evolves through the duration of the project. Okay.
So the next step was, you all requested a third-party cost estimate. Todd Construction is somebody we worked in with the past. They have completed several public safety facilities. And so we had them, we provided the same information that we provided our cost estimators and gave it to Todd Construction, gave them two weeks to go through the cost estimating efforts. And these are the numbers that they gave us at the hard construction level. Oops, sorry. Apparently, I have to zoom in. So as you can see from the hard construction, they were at 12.6 million construction costs, which puts us right between the range that Jeff had mentioned in the previous slide. And I have a slide next to just do all the side-by-side comparisons. So the low and the high are in the 12 December 24 numbers. That was where the cost estimator had come in. And then the new number that you see, the GC estimate or the Todd Construction estimate they provided us is on the far right. And so you can see kind of where the comparisons are. There were some discussions about, you know, how much general conditions, but overall, it kind of flushed out in the end of where the numbers are going to be. So any questions in regards to the Todd Construction numbers that we received?
I, I think that the, I was just looking at the numbers there. Oh, sorry. And I, I was going to say, your comment about the numbers flushing out, it's like, you can see variation, but if you look at the CMGC participation, Todd Construction was, was going to basically give you a deal. It's like, hey, for $75,000, we will do all the work associated with it. But when you look at the bottom line, it's, it's averaged out. It's, it's in the range that we were already forecasting.
Their general conditions are higher, so.
I noticed with their contingencies, they pretty much did an escalation, estimated contingency, and a construction contingency. And that was basically about 20%. Is that because they kind of like overlapped some of the things that you price out differently?
So there were certain things that not every cost estimator puts everything in the same bucket. And so without a further deep dive from our team of where exactly the numbers were allocated, we can't tell you if, you know, what the difference might be. If you were to go with Todd Construction or any other construction company, we would do a more deeper dive of, okay, where was the differentiators? But at this time, we felt the numbers were so close in range and within our range that we, we accepted our number as is at this time.
Find it, I don't know if comforting is the right word, maybe reassuring is a better word. The two independent teams of estimators basically landed in the same ballpark.
You might mention, I think it's important to know, I guess I can mention it, sorry, related to what you're describing. I think it's important to know that having an estimator or a contractor that is familiar with the project type is important here, because you could get a different number on it and be very excited about the number, but it's not real.
Somebody who's never built one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Move on to the next slide, which is, one of the things that you guys had requested was, well, what if we went to a different site? We bought a new property, and we were able to build a one-story building. What would that look like? What would the costs be like? One of the biggest unknowns is what is that purchase price of the property? Are you going to get it for free? Is somebody going to donate the property? And if they do give you the property, is there, what kind of soil conditions are there? There's a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of site issues that can potentially happen. But overall, from Mackenzie's experience, we have laid out for you here four different one-story police facilities that we have recently completed or have completed a cost estimating on. And as you can see, at the average, we are looking at, sorry, my eyes aren't as great either. We're at an average of about $900 per square foot. The Dallas Police proposed number on the right is showing a $975 per square foot, and that is inclusive of the site information that we already know for the itemizer building as well. So there's, when you look at the grand scheme of things, the delta is very small between a one-story and a two-story. And sometimes potentially, a one-story building could be more than a two-story building, depending on the site that you guys choose. So.
So of these projects, Mall of Police will be wrapped up in December. So the, the building is 80-some-odd percent complete. So we know those numbers. St. Helens Police, that is fully designed, waiting for construction start. Umatilla Police, same thing. And that's a CMGC delivery. In fact, all three of those first projects are CMGC-delivered projects. Calamba Police was a design bid build project, and that one's completed.
Is that actually 21,000 feet of site and only 4,000 feet of building?
Yep, I do believe that's correct. Yep, that's the smallest, that is the smallest police station that Mackenzie's done. One, one other thing that I'm thinking of too. So when you think about a two-story versus a, a single-story building, and then the cost that Kathy was describing, some of the programmatic things that are different between those are an elevator and the stairs. And we're talking about, I don't know, 350 square feet of space. It's just not a lot of space. The elevator has a, a cost associated with it, maybe in the $100,000 range. The stairs are probably $20,000 to $40,000 apiece. So they are a premium, but they're pretty small in the grand scheme of things when you look at the overall cost of the project. The cost of the project is, when it's all said and done, yes, it's got these systems, got to make prevailing wage, regardless of what the project delivery is going to be. It has to be a central facility. It's going to shake down to a cost per square foot. And the cost per square foot, it doesn't matter if it's two-story or it's single-story. If it's 12,538 square feet, which is what's being forecast for you guys' facility, it's this times that cost. That's essentially what it will shake out to be.
When you're estimating the construction, the cost of the construction, and you mentioned prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, are you saying that you hire out union contractors only? And not, um, non-union contractors, thus you have to pay the prevailing wage?
Have to be union employees. It just has to meet the prevailing wage requirements.
Basically you're paying union scale for non-union if they are the successful bidder on the project, so.
I just wanted to, I guess, kind of like explain that.
Questions about the one story option versus two story?
What I'm hearing is that there's not much savings in the, in our case to figure out a way to go one story. There's not much savings.
Unfortunately not, history has told us that it doesn't make a big, great, big difference.
That's the biggest thing I see is you're on your hard costs, the building construction costs. Why is our two story building coming in as the second lowest person, the below the second orange line, third orange line? We're at 664, the climate is at 652 and everybody else is in the mid 700s or 900s. It seems like we're, I'm just confused why, why our costs are technically low.
Per foot?
I just don't want to get, if we're going to do this again, I, we've got to be prepared and I don't want to go over budget. And I understand that the estimate came in at the bottom of the range, so we're good there. And we making sure since we're going to say it one more time while we're talking, because people will, will listen. The bond doesn't, if a bond was, had been authorized for 17.2 and the building came in at 2 million less than that, we only use the 2 million less. And I'm just putting that out to the public again.
I think the Yumatilla one is one of the higher one, as you noted. I think it's also, Jeff, you could probably talk to this a little bit better than I can, but the site area is quite a bit larger. They have a lot more surface parking, all of that, right away work and stormwater requirements and different things like that. They're also a more rural police facility. And so availability of contractors and subcontractors that are available to do, provide those services also comes with a premium. And therefore there, you guys are seeing some savings of the, because of the location that you are in. Also having less site to also work through as well.
You, you covered it. There's also, it'll be an exciting project for Yumatilla when they get that constructed. There's a huge grade change and they're, they've elected to actually fill it to, to, to make it so it doesn't have so much grade change. So we have a huge amount of fill on those site. And there's also, they're moving from a, a regional dispatch for 911 to actually be 911 within the city. And so there's a cost associated with that too, so.
Em, can you pull your mic, mic now?
Councilor Schilling was asking about the building construction costs per square foot being a little bit less, but the site construction cost per square foot is double what everybody else's is, why is that?
Guys also have a demolition and it's not going to be a very simple demolition, unfortunately, because of the sensitivity of the neighboring buildings. And so that's one thing to take into consideration is also there's some contingency that we put in there in regards to, okay, let's make sure the other building doesn't fall down on.
The other buildings were just.
They were in a.
New build.
Quite, yes, new build, wide open sites.
Okay.
Are there any seismic differences between a public surf, public safety building and a standard commercial building? Are they all the same seismic zone that we're in?
It's a same, good question. It, it's the same seismic zone, but the standard that we're designing to for an essential facility is a higher standard than commercial building. So a commercial building is, just dumbing it down, if you will, is only intended to stay up long enough to get the people out. An essential facility designed to remain operational, whether it's a windstorm, a snowstorm or a seismic event. And so they're usually designed to 150% of the design parameters.
A requirement by code or is that a desire of yours and ours?
It is a code requirement.
Code requirement. And what, so we can answer these questions to the general public that keeps coming up. What typically do you think that would be in terms of how much more that cost over a standard commercial building? Is it 30% more, 20% more to ballpark?
It's kind of, it's, it's hard to articulate it, but I, I'll tell you, it's probably a 10 to 15% premium on the structure. So.
Bigger footings, bigger rebar, more.
Yeah, that sort of thing.
Racing and things like that.
Yep, yep.
That would only apply to the structure, not to site issue.
Correct, yeah. It's not going to change the siding of the building or the roof or that sort of thing. Right, yep.
Things you don't see.
Right, yeah, exactly. You, yeah, exactly. Skeleton of the building.
Seen some police stations that had like floating ceilings and some of them that had open ceilings that expose, you know, central heating and stuff like that. Is, is that something that you'd factor in to this particular construction?
Yeah, I'd have to go in, that's a really good question. If you're familiar with Albany Police Project, that's a project that we did. It's open to structure, so you can see all the ductwork. You could see all the CAT six cabling on it, all the electrical conduits and stuff like that is, is visible in most of the spaces. Is a, a choice to, to do that. And sometimes it could be a cost savings.
That's why I asked the question, is it?
Yeah, but other times it's not because if it's above a ceiling, the, the tradesmen don't actually have to worry about how they route things. They just, it's, this is the easiest way for me to get to that corner. So I'm going to cut across the corner. Well, that wouldn't look good to not have a ceiling on it. So sometimes the cost savings of removing the ceiling starts to get eaten back up by routing the, the ductwork and the lines in a way that.
So it's not a 100% cosmetic decision.
Correct, yes, yep. So we've done it both ways. And, and usually we try to find a happy medium. So Albany has hard lids on it. And then if you're familiar with like us, we go city hall and police. It has a combination of hard lid and open areas and we painted out the ductwork and whatnot in a dark color. So even if it's not run as clean and sharply as it could otherwise be, it kind of just drops away because it's black against a white floating ceiling.
I can share with you guys for the price estimate that we did. We did do certain open to structure areas for especially the back of house, like the armory or evidence areas where the public may not be entering. But in the public areas like the front lobbies and different things like that, we do have ceilings. And we took into consideration some of the acoustical values of those as well. Great, shall we move on to the itemizer building as a temporary facility? All right.
Do it.
We can always come back if there's a new question.
Yeah.
You may be planning to answer this, so if it's premature, I'll just wait for you to get to it. But, but one of the big things that pops up immediately when we contrast the original proposal with, with, you know, using the itemizer is what function, no, function isn't right, but what features do we give up? Cause you know, there are a lot of reasons why we need a new facility. Some of them are really critical and some of them are just nice to have. Critical ones would be things like not interviewing people in the hallway anymore. Not eating lunch where we prepare evidence, you know, those things are really high priority. But as you rank all the different things that, that the proposed facility would have done, some of them we can live without, without too much pain. And did you factor a lot of that in when you did the estimate for the, for the itemizer building?
So the itemizer building is barely high level preliminary numbers. It, it does not take, we, as one of the assumptions that we have noted, we have noted that you're not going to get everything you want. And there's going to be some very big discussions that we need to have about what's going to be in the itemizer building? What's going to be in the annex? And you're more than likely going to have to stay in the existing city hall. So what does that do to your operations in general? For police to be spread across three different buildings potentially that may or may not be connected. And that's the only way you're going to reach 12,500 square feet, which is what your programmatic needs are. If you're not going to give up anything. And so that will be something that you, we will have to do further study on to see what we can do to give up. But the itemizer building is roughly 7,500 square feet. And that's all, all we have to work with as far.
So my question is right now, a lot of big question marks that haven't been drilled down and figured out yet.
Exactly, yeah.
Square feet are they operating with now? Do we ever do an analysis on that?
Say a little over 5,000 square feet, five, yes.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've looked at that. I think the number was like 5,200 square feet. Yeah, all the different sections in city hall that they're in, in the annex, it's like 5,200 square feet. That includes the annex.
For 50 years, yeah. So we're planning out to the future as much as possible. So in this instance, we looked, before we actually looked at tearing down the itemizer, we did do a little brief study of, okay, is the itemizer worth preserving as it is? Our structural engineer did take a look. There are significant structural deficiencies due to the age of the facilities. And there are unknowns in regards to the foundation of the building as well. That is, will need to be improved upon, even as a temporary facility. Because you're putting an essential, critical facility in the space, the space will need to be upgraded per code to the essential facility criteria level that we just talked about in seismic criteria. So all the structural will have to be upgraded to, so that they can remain operational after an emergency event. And there is also building envelope issues with the building. They have single pane windows that are no longer energy code compliant. So all of these things will need to be brought up to code. It's also an unreinforced masonry building, which is also one of the most complicated ones to seismically retrofit for an essential facility criteria.
Those upgrades are like, do you take into consideration any maybe grants or anything that, that might come in for seismic upgrades or things like that?
We can, typically the grants only range in somewhere around one to $2 million. The state, the seismic, the one that you're referring to is a seismic retrofits generally. And I can't remember if it applies to purchased properties or if you have to already be occupying the facility.
Are there grants for replacing windows for energy efficiency?
There are energy trust of organ refunds and different things that we can take into consideration. And so those are possible, but they don't unfortunately amount to multimillion dollars of.
So if just retrofitting the existing building, it's still going to be $17 million?
So, so if we'll, we'll get there, yeah. So if we go to the next page, here are some of the assumptions that we made based on our discussions.
Like we're jumping, this is.
So as I mentioned, the temporary facilities will need to be upgraded to current code requirements. The building systems will need to be updated. So there'll be new mechanical, electrical, lighting, plumbing, all of that will be required. In this instance, the itemizer building doesn't have a lot for us to save in regards to any of those building systems. We talked about the building envelope will need to be replaced. There's a new roof that needs to happen, windows need to be replaced in order to meet current energy code. There'll be, it'll need to meet essential facility criteria. And then we will likely recommend doing a minor improvement to the annex building or part of city hall in order to make sure that all of the functions are, are located in the appropriate location, right? And there's some kind of connection between the three different buildings. There's also going to be some minor site work for improvements to the parking area as well as in order to access the foundation and in systems as well. So what does that boil down to? We just did some very quick math based on our cost estimators, current industry standards, historical datas. So there's 7,500 square feet in the itemizer and the police annex is roughly about 1,500 square feet. We did not take into account city hall at this time and how much space you would need. But roughly, if we were just to say, you know, 12,500 is what we were trying to reach, you would still need another 3,000 square feet of the city hall space to meet the programmatic needs, just to do apples to apples for a brand new building.
It's 35.
So at the 9,000, at the 9,000 square feet, we're sitting at 7 million?
Correct, so that would include an extensive renovation to the itemizer building, a moderate, moderate renovation to the annex section. And then we're adding quite a bit of contingencies. Renovation projects are very difficult and so many unknowns. So we have, carry a higher level of contingency on those projects.
Built into.
That's built into that number right there, as well as you still have to take into account the consultant fees and the soft costs, which is in the orange right there, which brings your total temporary. And you guys will have to tell us, is this a five year or a 10 year temporary, but, or a one year? But whatever that case may be, the, you're going to be at least putting in a minimum of 5.3 million to $7 million for a temporary facility that may or may not need your, meet your needs.
All part, round a third of what we would have spent on the original proposal.
So you're saying that the temporary facility could only be up to five years? Put us only five years ahead?
I think that's our call.
It's going to definitely be your call. How the police department functions operationally is probably not going to be ideal, spread out across three different facilities. It's probably not going to be the most efficient flow. And you're not going to have maybe the best of finishes or different things like that as well, so.
Is that, is any of that structural or is it mostly just moving things around so that functions that need to be together are together? And the.
In this instance, we were looking at more at just making it functional space. And then possible, is there a need for connection between that? Is there a way for us to connect those buildings in any sense? Exactly.
To, to the extent that you can, you'll still be limited to like, this is the footprints, you gotta squeeze it all.
Thing is, is a compromise, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I just wanted to highlight, this is an example where we rolled the contingencies. It's just one line item, right? So contingency, we just squash this thing down to actually do that. And I also wanted to share as a comparison sake to the cost estimate that we were just looking at. There were costs per square foot that we were talking about. So we ran the numbers on here and I remember right, I want to say on the low end, it was $430 a square foot. And on the high end, it was 530 if I remember correctly, so.
Just for hard costs.
Correct, just for the hard cost.
With the retrofitting or seismic and all of that and bringing it up to essential facility criteria, what does that put in the timeline of construction? Does that make it, is that a longer process than building a new structure? And how much longer is that if that's the case?
It's a good question. One of the things I did talk to our structural engineer about is what is the duration? This may actually be a very complicated retrofit. And so it may take almost just as long as building a brand new station to retrofit. And especially since you're living in the space or operating out of the space, especially if you choose to fix up the annex portion of the city hall and causing some disruption. This may create the time, construction timeline to be a little longer as well, so.
I just want to ask all the.
You say, when you say may, there's a difference between may and will, but you just, you can't, you can't know that.
Because we haven't done the, the level of evaluation yet. Like what I was just getting ready to say, I believe what structure, what our structural department is probably thinking is in order for us to keep the exterior walls, because they're unreinforced, there's no way to reinforce them. They're unreinforced, it is what it is. You could either tear them down or you could put a structure on the inside of them and just leave that thing out there as a screen, which is.
It's probably would become a facade.
Yeah, it would totally be a facade. Okay, yeah, I think that that's probably what we're thinking, so. Yeah, I walked through the building, I'm trying to remember, I just remember a lot of CMU walls on the inside. It's, yeah, there were CMU, CMU block walls, at least in portions of it that I saw. And then I believe it's all dimensional lumber framing for the roof.
I think that's correct.
Which again is, what's that?
At least we made a good buy on it.
Yes, yeah.
Trying to think of every question Larry that I've been asked and get it out there, because.
Ask it before you'll be asked it again.
Yeah.
So the, what Kathy's looking up is you see these little bottom left of the page here. It's like these little checklists that describes what the structural systems are. So she's zooming into it so she can actually read what they are. And so we'll be able to share with you in just a moment. Hopefully.
Hopefully.
My vocals just aren't up to it.
Yeah.
Yes, masonry walls, non-conforming, no steel and wood ledgers. So make sure it would and, and CMU, that's unreinforced. and CMU, that's unreinforced.
Hopefully CMU, I didn't quite hear.
And wood.
Yeah.
And wood.
Sounds like they're hanging ledgers off of the CMU block that's up against the library and the other building. And it's probably not reinforced CMU either.
Well, I was asking.
Okay. Quick question. Oh, everybody's done. Good. Um, is there a chance that there could be a cost, um, for upgrades of any codes in this building, since it's still connected to that building? If you upgrade that?
Question. There could be potential triggers that we have not found, um, just yet. We haven't done, done a deep enough dive to do so. But because of the connection between the annex building and this one, if we do touch the annex building, we may need to do some improvements, but I think our recommendation would be at that point to do as minimal as possible, um, to the annex and, and not connect the two buildings, um, as well, and the itemizer and the annex.
At that point, didn't we figure a new service and moving the services for this building, electrical service to the back if we built the original? So that was included in the price. So wasn't it? Okay.
Since we're talking about that, Kathy and I were talking about this, uh, on the way down. So the annex butts up against the city hall. So the city hall is a vulnerability, even if you improve the annex building on it, the, during a seismic event, if something bad and catastrophic happens to city hall, it could cause damage to the new annex or the remodeled annex. It could fall on it. It could crush a wall. It could, it could be somewhat insignificant. It just got water damaged because it's raining outside or whatever. But it's like, that's something you can't fix. They're, they're connected. Um, the new design, we're separating the structures out so that there's allowed movement between them. So they won't damage each other.
For time to sit on it, or anybody have any more questions for them at the moment? State, again, we keep looking at this and one of the big things is the safety of our police officers. And in that addition, is that, are we doing any secured parking with? So no secured parking, no seismic, uh, the building that we're currently in. If whatever is left in this building would probably not have seismic. So we're still at risk if a seismic event occurred. And it doesn't even necessarily have to be a seismic event. Hasn't happened in Dallas, but if a group came in and wanted to blow up the building a little bit, a newer building is designed to alleviate a lot of those things with the way the buildings are constructed and would stand. The current building would not stand.
Point, it doesn't have to be a seismic event. A windstorm could knock a big tree on top of your roof and do substantial damage. There's a lot of, lot of ways it can happen.
And so with roughly five thousand square foot now in, in use, I'm assuming there was a study that determined we needed twelve thousand five hundred and twenty eight square feet. And is that something we can see? Or?
Talk about.
Yeah, we have. So the first step that we went through is a programming exercise. So, uh, we met with, uh, the former chief and, uh, current chief Mott and other staff to go through and figure out what their staffing projections were going to be, the space allocation for each of those. Um, uh, so the individual workstations and then the demand for, um, landmarks. So that we, your toilet rooms, your locker spaces, uh, evidence areas, all those things that they're bigger than what an individual needs, but it's the requirements associated with how the, uh, uh, PD actually operates. So we went through that. It results in a spreadsheet that itemizes out the staff count and then the size associated with that. I honestly don't remember off the top of my head. When we went through that, we got a number and it, it gives you a ballpark. And then maybe high or low, but it's in the range of what you need. And then when you start to, um, uh, lay out the building, the way it's going to be configured, it, it may be different than what the program shows just because of the way the building has to lay out. But yeah, we can totally make available the program to you. And that's based on space standards from, uh, the industry standard as far as, um, this is the way that spaces should be as far as their sizes go.
You know, doing the math, if it's a thousand dollars a square foot, you know, going from twelve thousand five hundred square feet down to ten thousand is saving us two and a half million. Is that right? Roughly if we uh, try to apply this to just a standalone building or, you know, building somewhere offside or whatever it really is. A lot of variables there, but, you know, it's a thousand dollars for every square foot that we've guesstimated we need in ten or fifteen or twenty years. I just.
Too, if you did a standalone building, you wouldn't have the demolition either. So it would be less even, I don't know what the demolition costs.
Seventy nine thousand.
How many?
Said a hundred and seventy nine thousand.
Yeah.
Which you can't buy a piece of property for a hundred and seventy nine thousand. There is a piece of property available for a hundred and ninety thousand right now, but it's not where we want this city. It would not be centralized.
I, I have a question for, uh, council. Without a doubt, it doesn't matter where the site was, how big the building is, two story or one story. Um, there are ways to reduce cost on a project. Um, this is still early on in the project. Uh, there will be ways of trying to hone this. Once you make up your mind what you want to do and we forecast what the costs are going to be associated with that, there will be a possibility of doing value engineering associated with it, but it'll be offset also by here's where we were and here's now a year out type of thing, right? So we have to kind of balance what the new costs are going to be and then try to pull it back to a, a number. And then the question for council would be, do you have a number that you, regardless of where it's at and how big the building is? This is what we're comfortable of asking our community to ask for.
I'm in different numbers.
Okay.
I'll throw one number out there that I've heard. It's ten million. Um, anytime you go to the right or higher from ten million, it seems like, um, we're not going to get as much support. And that's why I was talking about the, uh, contingency area. I felt like that's an area that we could probably move the needle towards, um, ten million, even if it's eleven five or something like that, you know? I really think that the further that we get away from ten million, the least success we may have. I'm interested to hear what everybody else thinks.
We agree with Carlos for the first time in a long time. It's a number that. Buddy, there were several comments, particularly the group that was at the aquatic center where they just, they were all in support of the, uh, police station, but it says two doggone much money. And I asked them, how much is, would you pay for it? And the number was ten.
Well, it's a psychological price.
It is. It has nothing to do with how much they're paying on their bond or what the taxes are, what their house is appraised at.
Your emotion.
It's right here.
It's pure emotion.
Everyone I talked to said single millions, so nine, anything below ten.
Single digits.
Yeah.
I didn't hear a, a lot of talk about, uh, how many million, and, and the people I talked to were just how much was it going to be, you know, a year for them? And not how much the total cost of this, this, the structure was going to be. So I don't know if that changes how we finance it or, or that even makes a difference. Um, yeah. And then I think about, uh, the time. I mean, time costs us money too. I mean, the longer we push this down the road, the more expensive it's going to be. Correct? Am I correct?
Visionary costs somewhere between four to seven percent per year.
Or two, seven?
Seven percent. Yeah. There's a big unknown right now in the political climate with the tariffs of what that's going to actually do. But we're seeing anywhere from four to seven percent increase per year on average.
Uncertain people are, the faster that happens. And there's a lot of uncertainty.
We also see, seen constructions, uh, for the first time in a long time of actual hard costs of buildings are actually going down, not up, but they're offset by the increases in different things. And it's just weird where, where the decreases are and where the increases are. And that's the uncertainty. It's not so much the tariffs. It's not so much the political climate. It's we were, we're moving around the target right now. And so it's could be that we're, uh, prices could all go down because we have a whole bunch of manufacturing going on. It's brought on board and the costs could actually stay stagnant. Do I think that's going to happen? No. Do I think it's four to seven percent? Uh, my undergraduate degree was in economics. Uh, they're like weather forecasters of the old days.
They say the economy depends on economists to the same degree that the weather depends on meteorologists. Yeah. Well, you know, we're dealing with uncertainty, even in the best of times. Yeah. That's why you have contingencies and that's why they're labeled as estimates, because you haven't figured out exactly what it's going to be yet. And, uh, um, you know, uncertainty is just what we live with, but there's an old saying in the army. No plan survives contact with the enemy. And that's just the reality. That's just the world we live in.
What's your process as far as doing an estimated? Do you do, uh, preliminary estimation, medium estimation? And do you get down to finalizing the estimation? What's the process?
Yeah. Um, so the project will go through three major design phases regardless of which project delivery, uh, you have. And, um, the, there are more drawings that could develop in each one of these phases. When it's all said and done, this probably will have, I don't know, a hundred and fifty pages of all the different design documents in there, architecture, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. So.
Those just overlays?
Yeah. Yeah. Essentially. Yeah. It's like more and more information gets developed as the project goes on. Um, so, uh, at each, uh, so the first phase is schematic design and at the end of that, we'll do a new price round. And so again, we might see, oh, we don't need as much contingency. Well, let's lessen that. We may see, um, some of the costs move and they become more real. And so again, that, that makes us feel more comfortable with like, all right, we can, we can release some of the contingency now because we have real costs because of the development of the documents. And then the next phase is called design development. At the end of that, it's basically sixty percent construction documents. And we would reduce the contingencies a little bit more with the idea that they've been moved over to the real now. It's been figured out. And then there'd be a last final estimate that would be done at the end of construction documents. Uh, where basically your, your GMP would be established, your gross maximum price from the contractor. And at that point, that's when you'll decide how much contingency you want to carry into construction, which we usually recommend roughly five percent, uh, for new construction. Um, and that's for the unforeseen conditions and any, uh, inconsistencies in design or even owner requested changes. But it will drop down to a five percent, but would still recommend you kind of carry something in there just because. So.
Well, the further you've, the more time you've spent, the further along you are and the more you've drilled down, the smaller the variables get.
Exactly. Yep.
I just ask, I'm sure that it's been said and, and maybe I just don't remember, but how, how many police officers does the new building, if we went with the seventeen million? How many police officers does that house? Match them up at its, at, at its fullest.
We've heard that number, but I don't remember what it is.
Yeah, I think.
Say it was twenty three sworn officers.
Do you have now?
Correct. Okay.
We are. That's where we're at now.
Let me sound it for something.
That's where we're at now.
Hold on. We'll, we'll see if we can look up the program real quick and. Yeah.
This has come up before, but I just don't remember.
Yep. It's, it's one of those things. Again, once you're done with the program, you just, you start to migrate over to like these rooms and this thing, and you don't remember the staff count, but yeah.
So other than the demo, what other things are driving the cost if we build it here up on this site right here? So other than the demo? You'd mentioned that we'd have to do something in case this building fell on that building. Is that?
I mean, it's been factored in, right? So we've, we've separated the, the structures out. I think there's an alleyway of uh, eight feet or something like that between the, the two structures.
Dollars?
Um, no, not, not really. Uh, we're just trying to be smart on how we're doing it. So, um, we're creating separation with a adjacent structure on the other side of it as well. So that again, it's not, we're not going to impact it or it's not going to impact us. Um, there is costs associated with, and I don't think that this is a bad thing or high thing. It's just, just related to this project. We will have public improvement, uh, costs associated with it. It's probably smaller than if you went to a different site. Um.
We're still keeping the physical fitness room in city hall. So you're talking about downsizing something we've already kind of constrained ourselves to a little bit. Um, we're talking about taking some of the detective space currently in city hall to be a physical fitness room or wellness room, um, as, as well. So, um, I do want to caution the council about downsizing this building any further, um, uh, as well. But okay. We are looking at, um, in fifty years, fifty nine, um, fifty nine, um, staff with forty three sworn officers.
The fifty year building is the, is the plan.
That's correct.
But so to be clear, if we were to go somewhere else and build a building, the only cost that's costing us more to build it here is the demo. Maybe a little bit of.
You also have the stairways that were talked about, the elevator. If you went to a single story, those, those things get taken out. But as, as Jeff mentioned, you know, you're looking at maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars for those elements.
Yeah. So with the demo, that's only like barely half a million dollars or something. I mean, that's not.
So, uh, two, two things. At, at some point, again, it becomes how big the building is. So if you move to a different site, if the building got smaller, you'd save money. If it stays the same, the cost should be generally the same. Um, with questions of like, do you have public right of way improvements on four sides or two sides of it? That's bigger than what you currently have, then it would cost more for the site improvements. The, the thing I wanted to highlight without digging into more detail here for the staffing count is, and I don't remember exactly how that number breaks down in the fifty nine, but a lot of that's going to be patrol officers and patrol officers don't get offices. They shared, um, uh, report writing desks. They do have space that's going to be locker space, but it's not like it's grossly exaggerated in size of facility as a result of having fifteen, you know, a little bit more than double what their current staff count is. Um, it's making sure that you have the space associated with, uh, with those officers when they are, uh, on duty. So.
So potentially for forty years, we could have half of our police station not really occupied?
I don't think that's what they're saying. They're saying that.
No, I mean, I just, if we're twenty three current and it's built for forty three sworn officers over fifty years.
Right. But what we're saying is that the, the workspaces for the patrol staff are shared.
Right.
And so it's, it's not that, it's not that you're going to have, you know, twenty empty desks that don't get used, you know, till over time, as you add more staff, all the desk spaces would be used today, you know, if it was built. And then as you add staff, the sharing, you know, just becomes more, there's more sharing than there would be with current staffing levels. Yep.
So ten million dollars is? Ten thousand square feet. We're currently in five.
This gets back to what I was talking about a while back, which is what functions must we absolutely positively have and what can we live without? Painful though it might be, what can we survive without?
I also think about, yeah, if it's, how much is that shorten the life of our facility and when are we going back again for expansion or? Um, you know, if we're on a different site and we can expand at another point, I mean, but it, like I said, it's down the road. It's more expensive again. So I just.
Kind of unknowns there.
And even down the road, maybe we want a substation somewhere. Maybe in fifty years we want, you know, I don't know, as we grow.
Is it even possible to think about a single story with the, the opportunity to go up? Build it structurally now where we could go up later? Or are we not saving much?
Um, it's not that that's not possible, but it's just not, uh, it's not a good strategy. Uh, the city actually asked us to look at the optimizer building and can we just add a second floor to it? And so the, the results of that were, no, you cannot. It's not uncommon that that actually happens, uh, more than likely, you know, the building code changes every four years. And when you look at the, uh, the life of a building, you're like, all right, well, you're probably not going to add on to it for, you know, fifteen, twenty years. At that point, you've gone through several code cycles. So it probably wouldn't be code anymore.
Is that's one of, just to keep going back to it, it's one of the loudest arguments I heard or people complain about if we, is that the site was costing us more money? And I'm not hearing that from you folks today, that it's not the location that's cost, making the building cost anymore, whether it was single story or the structure that we chose or we're looking at. cost, making the building cost anymore, whether it was single story or the structure that we chose or we're looking at.
So if you have any more, do you have more questions for the architects?
No, I'm all open a can of worms with, with that statement. You have to look at the whole picture when you're talking about that kind of worms. The building, we could resell the building, the itemizer building for what? 350, 450? And save 179. So you're looking at a half million dollar savings that could offset going to a different site that you would have to buy for, we'll use the prune barn that just went on the market for 190,000. That puts us on the other side of town. So that's 200. So you're saving 300,000, which in the scheme of things, a more centralized police station is why we looked at this site. So 300,000 savings, is that worth moving the building?
Just a year, which you'd probably lose that in, in, uh, increased cost of materials and labor.
Yeah.
Far from an ideal location.
Correct me if I wrong, the only real substantial value in going to another location is avoiding the demolition. Or is there more to it than there is? It seems to me that's basically the trade off. Well, that could be an issue at, at any site. That's not a, a.
Our hamstring a little bit with the design. I mean, if we wanted to make it smaller, we have the annex to consider and it'd be kind of difficult to say, come back with 10,000 square feet.
But what if the city had a newer building? That could be used. I don't, I don't know the square footage of the building that I'm thinking of. But it would be, I mean, I guess you'd have to still really reinforce it to make it a police station. Is that?
It brings, it goes back to the seismic category and the seismic risk. So you're still needing to convert a commercial building into a, a central facility. So the seismic requirements, while, you know, it might not be unreinforced basingary. We even looked, um, one example I can give you is about pre pandemic. You guys asked us to look at the old DHS building, um, that was located in town. And even that required significant seismic renovations and, um, and then it had daylighting issues and different things like that. So, um, or.
There could be grant funds for those things that could really help substantially too, right?
Potentially, um, but there, we have to be very open here that there isn't a lot of grants out there that we have found to be applicable to public safety facilities. Um, the seismic grant is probably the largest grant that is currently out there. I believe that at two, 2.2 million approximately at the most.
And it's competitive.
And it's very competitive. Yeah.
So if there's a third party developer out there who wanted to build us a building or build himself a building, he wouldn't have to use, uh, bully wages, prevailing wage, and he wouldn't have to build it per public safety seismic, would he? If we were to lease it from him after it's built. Not that I want a building that would fall on our police officers if we had earthquake, just a question.
Yeah. So the, the, the first, the first question and, and answer to that is no. If a developer was building a building, they don't have to make, uh, prevailing wage requirements.
Just what, a 20% savings, 30% savings?
It, it's going to vary. It's probably between 10 and 20%, something like that, maybe. And then, uh, related to essential facility, it's like, that's still a requirement of the product. So if you had a building, let's just say it was a class A office building that was in your space and it just happened to be 15,000 square feet or something like that. If you were having us look at it, we would immediately flag it and say, hey, it doesn't meet essential facility requirements. You need to invest this in it in order for it to actually meet the requirements associated with, uh, essential facility. So that, that would be the part of like, you wouldn't want to move into a building that a developer developed that was not meeting essential facility requirements. But again, we're only talking maybe in the 10 to 15% range for the structural costs associated with it. So it's, it's not the whole, it's not a 10% premium over the, uh, total building. It's just the structural cost. So if you have that developer, I would say, could you build us an essential facility for us? Cause we want it. So.
This case, it'd be a $2 or $3 million savings for the prevailing wage savings roughly ballpark. Something to think about.
Although interesting enough, right? Whoever their selected contractor is may actually be using union workers anyway. So then you wouldn't save that necessarily. It would be built into our cost.
So if we're kind of done with the questions for the architects right now, we still have the financial options that Cecilia Ward, our finance director role will guide us through. So we can invite her to come up and do that. Um, and, and maybe as we make the transition, we talked a lot about kind of uncertainty. There's a lot of uncertainties with the building construction and other things like that. You know, knowing that the, that whatever project, you know, the council decides to be afforded with is going to go out to the vote of the people. And that's the, that's the big uncertainty, right? Elections are uncertain. And so, um, you know, what we know within election is, uh, you know, no matter what the, the citizens tell us, um, you know, if it's a $10 million is the threshold or under, under 10, um, you know, we see that, uh, we hear that from people and then when they give their ballot, you know, that could be true or it could not be true.
I'm glad you said that because there is the Bradley effect and it's quite real. I mean, when we, I, I, I don't think very many of us have forgotten that the, um, we were told from our survey data that, um, that it was going to be much closer than it was. And I even, I remember I even posed the question at the time, have you considered the Bradley effect? And they were told, oh yes, we've considered, and then we got a much wider spread than we were expecting. The reason I bring that up is that, uh, you have to be at least sensitive to the possibility that that happens with voters when they're talking about costs. Yeah. Oh, I pay for a $10 billion building. And then when he's got the ballot in front of him, no, maybe I won't. So there's a lot of uncertainty there.
And there is there and, and then, you know, you also think of, you know, other elections as you look at them. I think of the Schmeck of the bond, you know, that just passed this last election, um, fell the first time. They didn't make any changes to their, their, uh, dollar amount. They kept it the same, you know, same value, all the same projects. Um, and for them, it was just a matter of more education, right? And, and phrasing it in a different way. And so, and that did enough to sway the voters, you know, to, to vote yes, instead of no, like they did the first time. You know, with our election that we had, we fell short, you know, a little north of 250 votes. So that's not, not insurmountable. It's not insignificant. So there's a bit of work that has to get done. But I think the election itself is also a wonderful marketing tool, right? Now people know what we asked them. Before it was all just kind of this ethereal, you know, the city is thinking about this project. But now they know this is what we're asking. This is what we're going after. So you have to look at that as an opportunity to say, you know, can we take the same project out with, you know, additional education, additional information, um, say, saying things in the right way and getting it across the finish line. Um, you know, you don't have to get a hundred percent, you have to get 50% plus one.
Oh, and another factor and another variable is the fact that, um, in this particular election, we were competing with two other asks. If we were on the ballot alone, it would potentially be a different dynamic.
Yeah. So there's just, there's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of unknowns, not only in, you know, what building projects we present to the voters, but you know, how are the voters feeling on the day that they vote? And, and who votes, right? I mean, we had so many voters vote this last election. Are we going to get the same voters voting this time? A different group of voters, um, some of the same, some different, uh, you just, you just never know. So there's a lot of factors that go into that. But yeah, as we move forward, I think, uh, Cecilia will be able to present us with a couple of different options, um, on the financial side, which, you know, I think some of those are more attractive than others, um, but certainly things that we can do. So.
How many square feet is the seniors, senior building? Have we thought about that?
If we have, it's, it's less than 5,000 square feet. It's, yeah, it's small.
But since we're asking about square feet, how many square feet, um, is not the building, but the site we're talking about for the original proposal, the two story, you know, the 17 million, the site itself, how many square feet is that? And then I have a follow up after that. Okay. This is completely out of, out of left field. Um, but what's the square footage of the Bank of America site? Just wondered.
The, I think it's a little bit larger than that. Yeah. Cause it, it goes a little bit behind the, the building next to it. It's probably about 12,000 or feet. Yeah. There you go.
One of the themes I hope that we kind of trumpet or beat with a drum is the return on investment on this police station. If we go by experience, what, what we have now, the police station that they have has been here for about 90 years. Hopefully, you know, when we build a police station, we don't have to wait 90 years or a hundred years before we have to retrograde or whatever. But, uh, everyone says that it's going to reduce, uh, crime and things like that. But we really have to talk about the return on investment of what this building is going to bring to the community. And we all pay in for it. We're all the owners of this police station. And we're in this contract with a builder. So.
So just to clarify, the senior center is just over 5,000 square feet. Yeah, just over.
That have been built seismically appropriate for a.
Not as an essential facility now.
All right. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
We want them to stick around.
Yeah. If you want to, if you want to stick around, if we have more questions as we go through, that'd be great. We'll invite our finance directors, Cecilia Ward, to come up and present on the different financial options.
Cecilia.
Different news.
Yes. Good way to put it. Okay. I know, um, Emily put the staff report together and provided some good information. And so we'll just go over what she provided. We were provided some of these options from our financial advisor and we asked them to put some different option scenarios together. And, um, so just kind of from what has been discussed in the past. So the first one, which is on page 26 of 42, this is just showing you if we were to take the, um, if we would do a local option levy, which is only good for five years, it has to be renewed every five years. But this amount would pay for the delta for the aquatic center, library and the senior center. So 1.65, so if you take the revenue from the aquatic, revenue from the library, which isn't much. And then the remaining would be the 1.65 that the local option levy would cover. Then that would free up your public safety fee for, uh, the, uh, billing funding for the financing of the building. So, no, that would take, there's so many scenarios here. That would free up the general fund to pay for the staffing that is paid by the public safety fee.
It just free up the general fund.
Yeah. It's part of the general fund. So it'd pay for the staffing that the public safety fee pays for right now. Whether it's police or now, we actually count fire, you know, public safety into it. And so that would leave an option of you to have the public safety fee as more of the public building, public, the police station building fee. Because this would free the, this, uh, portion up for the general fund.
So you said this had dealt to the library, aquatic, and what was the third one?
Senior center.
Senior.
Senior center. Any staff are currently paid for with that fee that we have now?
Well, it, it's kind of morphed into a little bit more than four full time. That was the original amount for full time when we were at the smaller amount of 495. So now that it's 1250, it's, um, right? I'm right. Okay. So it's morphed into more than that. So we have, that would cover probably more like eight to 10 staff.
Specifically didn't have, so the original public safety fee at 495 was specific to positions, right? To firefighter, paramedics and firefighter EMTs, and then two police officers. Um, and that was set at the, you know, entry level, step one type, you know, level of employee at their pay. So when we adjusted that fee, uh, a year or so ago to the 1250, we no longer dedicated it to certain positions or a certain number of positions. We just said, this fee will pay for the personnel services costs of the police department and the fire department. And so now that's how that gets paid for. So we're not necessarily concerned about the number of employees it's paying for as much as it's paying towards the personal services costs of those two departments. Knowing that the personal services costs are much more than what that fee covers.
And this scenario came from, I mean, I asked this question. I know about these three items. The way that Cecilia stated isn't the way that I really see it being, taking effect in order to free up general fund monies. We would take off these, the library, the senior center and aquatic center, and that money would come in the form of a general, what is, what kind of bond is this?
Options I'd be.
Looking at local option levy, which would then increase our general fund by that amount to pay for those items out of that levy and allow us to use our general funds to build the building.
This is only good for five years or.
You'd have to go out every five years.
So what happens in.
You'd have to go back out again.
Say no.
Then you close them.
And so we're, we would shut down the library, the aquatic center and the senior center?
County has been successful with this, doesn't guarantee we would be.
Well, the reason I asked it is, okay, I can, I'll quote our counselor down here in the green hat, uh, without water, you don't have a city. So that was the number one thing that we did as a city council is we made sure we, we had water for the next 50 years. We're still working on it. Hopefully we're going to start in 28, 29. Depends on ODFW and a couple of other agencies that are, have letters to them. Then you have two other things that the city is required to do. We need to provide police and we need to provide fire. Now, do I like parks? Do I like the library? Do I like the aquatic center? Do I like the, the city, the senior center? I'd say yes. I'd be willing to vote for those, but in my, my thought is we provide water, we play, provide police and fire. And if we want the rest of the things that the city provides, then the citizens can vote on it. That's why this option is brought up. It's one of many we need to talk through and it's not a fun one, but that's why we're here. That's why we're voted in by our citizens, our peers, and we're here to make tough decisions.
It's a worthwhile conversation because it's very rare for a city our size to be a full service city as we are.
Cecilia, oh, go ahead.
I, I I value this as, I see this city council being instead of a typical government council that's reacting to things. I think we're trying to be proactive in what we're doing. And being proactive means we can also keep our costs down. It might not seem like we're keeping our costs down, but building a building for 50 years instead of one that's good for 10 years. Spending $10 million to retrofit something that's going to last for 10 years makes no sense to me when in 2003, 2004, I believe, we went out for a police fire bond. It failed. It was about $10 million and it supplied new buildings for the police and the fire department. Now we're at 17 million and it's only supplying for the police.
Right. I mean, there's an old saying, you can do it right or you can do it over.
I do understand the costs. It makes me, I'll just say it vomit in my mouth. When I look at the cost of what a toilet costs, a commercial toilet is not cheap. If anybody has been in the schools or anywhere else, they're pretty much bulletproof. You can throw things, you can stomp on them, you can kick them sideways and they don't break. That comes at a huge cost, but not only it's an inflated cost because of the type of building it's in. So those specifications are required to be in there. So a $3,000 toilet sounds like, you know, a $15,000 hammer that we heard about in the military buying. Well, it's not. It's what the costs are. A $15,000 water heater. I was in charge of putting a water heater in, in a, in a building. Let's see, in 99 and that water heater cost me 12 grand. So, and it's a commercial grade water heater is a totally different beast. So sorry for my passion there.
So I have a question for Cecilia. So this 1,650,000 a year, over the course of 10 years, we. over the course of ten years, we pretty much pay for this, a sixteen million dollar building, right? I mean.
I mean, if you.
Yeah, if you took the math and.
Ten years, we would be able to afford a sixteen, sure, million, five hundred thousand dollar building.
I think there's finance costs in there as well, in addition to.
If you waited to build the building for ten years, I mean, you know, if you finance it, you're gonna have interest payments and so it'd take more than ten years, but.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I mean, if you had a seventeen, if you had a seventeen million dollar building in ten years from now and you got one point six per year, then yeah, you could do that.
I guess where I'm headed here is this local option levy wouldn't go on for twenty years or thirty years like our bond was. It would be less in five-year increments. We would only need it for maybe ten years, maybe fifteen.
I think you're probably looking at at least.
Twenty years.
Twenty.
Yep, just with your interest cost for financing.
Means renewing it at least three times.
Right.
Dollar building, I saw eight million dollars in interest over the life of the.
I think it's more than that.
We're gonna get to this page.
Yeah. Oh, that just made my day. Probably four million.
Told you.
Roughly, I think it's close to double.
Ruining things here.
Yeah, the interest kills you. But Cecilia, if you can just mention, before we go to those other pages, the cost per thousand for the.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to get at, to, to point out that this is a five-year local option levy. But if you notice on that third column, it's, I mean, yeah, it would be price per thousand would be a dollar thirteen and then it goes down to a dollar. Now you go, we'll go look at the other scenarios and it's, it's quite a bit more on this type, this option on price per thousand.
So your voter is paying for their assessed value at a dollar thirteen per thousand. So if you remember, our bond, was it fifty-two cents? Yeah, so you're looking, this is more than double this option.
But it does cut ten years off. I mean.
Potentially, I, you know, the twenty numbers is a, you know, guesstimate, we haven't done that analysis.
Well, I think, just to look at what we had, let's, let's skip to page twenty-nine, I think it makes a little more sense. Because that's what, this is a thirty-year term. Four are seventeen point four. And if you see in that last column, it was about fifty-two cents per thousand. So that's what our original look at the bond looked like. So just kind of to give you another idea before we look at the other two scenarios. Just wanted to point that out. And then the other couple scenarios we went was with what McKenzie presented us was for on page twenty-eight to forty-two. That was for the remodel of the IO building, but it was at fourteen million because at that time we didn't have the estimate from McKenzie. So when we asked our financial advisor for the twenty-year scenario on the remodel, we worked off of the fourteen million. And so, so this would be twenty years for that amount. And these two, last two scenarios are based off of the amount the public safety fee is making for us this fiscal year. So he took what we were getting this fiscal year and then spread it throughout the twenty years to bring up the principal and interest payments and how much we can use there.
Yeah, so right now, your public safety fee is bringing in a little over one point one million dollars. And so that's where you're seeing the debt service on the page that Cecilia referenced, page twenty-eight to forty-two. The debt service column on the far right is one point one five nine, you know, oh nine seven. So that reflects the amount of public safety fee revenue that you're collecting today, built into a twenty-year debt service.
Increases.
So the only, the last scenario is the same idea based off of the public safety fee, but over a thirty-year period and to bring us back to that seventeen point two point three million amount. But that takes the public safety fee as is on the twenty million, I mean, the twenty-year, up to a thirty-year to a seventeen million dollar amount. See, that debt service stays about the same as the previous scenario. So those are the four options we started with, I'm sure there's many to go, but gave you some idea there.
So in, in one thing to consider, just from a, the public safety fee that you have implemented was done, you know, just through a council action. So one scenario you could look at is to put before the voters an increase or a public safety fee or a public building fee, you know, public safety building fee. So instead of a general obligation bond, which assesses property tax, you know, property taxpayers, your public safety fee would, that you put out to the voters would charge your utility payers, which there are more sewer accounts. Right, which there are a lot more sewer accounts than there are properties in Dallas. And so you're able to bring the, the cost of per payer down for a public safety building fee that you put out to the voters than you are on a bond. So you can actually reduce the cost per person. No, you wouldn't have the local option levy in this scenario, so this is a different.
That would be the only thing, I mean, but that takes money away from the aquatic center, the library and the senior center?
So you could, you could put out as an option a vote to the people to say, we want you to vote on a, a public safety building fee that would be paid by every utility customer in the city who has a sewer account. Cause we have some water accounts that are outside the city limits. So you wouldn't want to bill those people, but sewer accounts, you have to be in the city. It would be, it would be, yeah, it would be a standalone fee. So you'd have, so the public safety fee that pays for the personnel services, but you would ask your voters to pay for a public safety building fee. And that fee would cost less per property owner or, you know, utility customer than it would for property taxes. It's not tied to their, it's not tied to their property, it's not tied to their assessed value. So to me, that's a pretty attractive option because from a communication standpoint, you're able to say everyone pays the same amount, right? It's not, you know, you have a five hundred thousand dollar assessed home and I have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home, so I pay this much and you pay that much.
A lot easier to explain.
It's a lot easier to explain. And, you know, that, that fee could be, you know, set at a certain amount. So the twenty-year option was the fee doesn't change, right? You're based on a twelve dollar fifty cent fee.
In addition to the twelve dollars.
In addition to the twelve fifty, right, yeah, so you're, you're already paying, you know, so everything is the same as it is today. You're adding another twelve dollar fifty cent fee per month that gets, that's approved by the voters to pay for the police station building. Now that gets you at twenty years, you know, fourteen million dollars in revenue. If you wanted to get to the seventeen million, you would probably look at a structure to say you're gonna pay twelve fifty, maybe for, for the first five years. That goes up by a little bit, you know, maybe a dollar fifty, two dollars, two dollars fifty cents, maybe on year five. And then get structured again, maybe another two dollar and fifty cent increase in year ten and then under two fifty in year fifteen in order to get to the seventeen million. We haven't run those numbers to know exactly what that would be, but we could do that to say, hey, over, you know, every five-year increment of the twenty-year horizon, that fee's gonna go up by this much. Again, that gets explained to the voters, everyone pays the same amount. So, but in that, in that scenario, as opposed to a bond or a public safety levy, it's, it's very easy to explain, it's very clear, everyone pays the same. And as you add more utility customers, you're also gonna generate additional, you know, revenue. So, you know, we're adding several apartment complexes that are in the pipeline.
I like that one because it is like a tax against your property.
Well, and as you say, population growth would tend to thin it out a little bit as time went by.
So, you know, for example, we're seeing, you know, the Tokula project that was approved by the planning commission is gonna add two hundred units. So that's two hundred, you know, additional accounts at twelve fifty per month. You know, you're, you're adding, you know, right now, we're adding about, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty houses a year in Dallas. You know, that one apartment projects, you know, bringing a whole year's growth.
That the, the time pay, it's paid off?
Correct.
Or keep the fee low, okay?
Each unit has its own sewer account, yep, yeah. I mean, it's all, it's all a centralized sewer system, but we charge the sewer account per unit, yep.
How many do we have right now?
Oh, sewer accounts, you know, because we take, yeah, it's around sixty-one, six thousand or so. And that covers those apartment complexes that have more than one.
Six thousand accounts now.
And that magic number is about, so one point six. Twelve fifty would be what the fee would roughly be.
So twelve fifty over twenty years generates fourteen million. So if you need, but if we wanted to get up to seventeen million for the current project that we took to the voters already, you would have to increase that, you know, probably at least one or two times.
It's about twenty-two dollars a month roughly per. Alright.
Go ahead, it sounds like.
Uh, when, when we put that fee in place, we were talking about, like you'd mentioned a little bit ago, that we would revisit that every year to see if, if it was meeting or, you know, outperforming. Is there any of those fees on the city bill that are outperforming that might, we might be able to level things out?
Um, so I do think there are some fees that we've had that we've been increasing kind of year over year the last few years, stormwater being one of those, right? That's been getting like a two dollar bump every year. That fee is, is one that we're gonna look at, you know, do we need to continue to increase that or are we feeling we're good where we are? You know, our sewer has not been increased in several years, so we've held off on that. That may be a fee that needs to start being increased again. Our water fee, we, in order to save money towards our, our future water expansion project, we had some very significant increases the last three years. That's gonna be pulled back this year to a more modest, just kind of your CPI-type increase. So, you know, that'll be reduced this year. So, yeah, I mean, we evaluate our fees every year, whether it's the public safety fee or our, our rates that we pay for utilities.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we talked about putting that out as a question on the election. Can we do, but how do you do, we're gonna lose time if we don't put out a levy at the same time? Do the, can you put out both questions?
Yes, yeah, you can put out multiple questions on the same ballot.
You don't, so what I'm saying is, I, I just wanna know what the citizens want.
Oh, I see, give them a choice.
Yeah, you want, here's the levy, here's the fee, here's, or don't do anything. And then it'd come down to if both of them pass, then we, it's back on city council to choose which one.
Okay, you don't, you don't have to, within a local option levy, you still have to file with the county and the state to receive those taxes. And so if you said, hey, they both passed, we're not gonna do the levy, we're just gonna do the fee, then you just don't file that paperwork with the state and the county.
I guess it would probably show which one's more favorable if one passes by a larger margin.
Sure, yeah, and that could, that could weigh in the decision-making of the council if, if both of those passed. A word of caution, putting multiple questions on the ballot, you know, you could confuse your voters, right? To say, oh man, the city's asking me for these two things. Right, no on both, or, you know, so you just have to be really careful and thoughtful about, you know, what you're putting out and how you're communicating that. And it's nice to give them options, but they might not see that as options. They may be seeing as, hey, the city's needing all this and, you know, and those greedy people, we're not gonna give them any of that, right? So.
It was for the average assessed value home with the one that we put on the ballot the last time annually or monthly.
Yeah, the average assessed value was two hundred, I think it was like two hundred and twenty thousand. So I can do some fast math on that, well, maybe Lurie will beat me. At, at fifty-two cents, yeah. Not a month, that was a, that was a hundred, that was a hundred, a hundred and thirty a year, yeah.
So that's about ten bucks a month.
Yeah, a little, a little over ten.
So that's what the public safety fee, or well, I mean, the building fee would be about twelve dollars a month. But everybody pays it, so it could be a shorter amount of time. And really, I mean, I guess there's a lot of them, but.
You have, you have to remember at the, at the, at the general obligation bond, the hundred and thirty dollars, you know, a year, is over a thirty-year horizon where your public, public safety building fee would be a twenty-year horizon. So you're cutting ten years off and the amount, the actual amount of money that you're raising and the citizens would be paying is significantly less because you're paying a lot less interest over those ten years. Which again is, is selling points that you communicate to your public when you're communicating that in the, in an election. So there are definitely different options, you know, to consider. So you're kind of walking away from tonight, what does the council, you know, feel? What are the, what are the things that you want us to continue to pursue? You know, do you feel like we need to pursue the renovation of the itemizer? Do you feel that we need to pursue the single-story? Are we feeling that, you know, the, the projects that we've already put out there is what we need to do and we need to look at different ways of financing it? There's a cost associated with all of that, right? I mean, you know, how, how far, you know, I mean, how far do you wanna pursue a single-story building? You know, I mean, the next phase is really saying, you know, alright, well, we're, you know, we need to identify a site and then we need to identify, you know, actually designing that. And, you know, the designing of a single-story building in order to get it out to a ballot requires time and money, right? I mean, the, the design for the projects we did was, you know, around two hundred thousand dollars. And so you're gonna spend, you know, close to that money again to get a single-story design if you wanna pursue that. And, you know, probably five to six months of work.
I don't care if it's a single-story or a three-story or I don't care, it's just like the cost. And it's the need and it's the cost.
Yeah, and so it sounds like what we heard tonight, though, is the, the cost of a single-story versus a two-story is pretty negligible. And so, you know, is that, is that an option that we really wanna pursue? Cause it sounds like it's gonna cost us the same amount, whether we do that project or the project that we already have.
Trim the seventeen million dollar project and then do the financing of it.
What do you guys, what does McKenzie think is reasonable to value engineer out of this? Ten percent? Fair number?
You just said, okay, I didn't know what that meant really, so, but I think I, I think I.
So you're, you're looking at maybe a fifteen million, you know, just call it a fifteen million dollar project. So with that, you're probably, you know, with the financial analysis that was done over a twenty-year bond, you're looking at fourteen million. So, you know, with growth, you're probably at the twelve fifty for a twenty-year. If you put the, if you put the public safety building fee out to a vote and a twelve fifty valuation over twenty years is probably what you would need in order to build the project that we put out to the voters with a value-engineered project.
What's the deadline to have our paperwork in?
So we're, we're targeting the May election, cause the deadline to get on for this fall would be next week after next, so that's a little bit too fast. And I think if you're changing, you know, some elements of the election from what you just put out, you're gonna wanna have a runway to be able to educate the public on that. So you're looking at May of twenty-sixth is your earliest. The deadline to file paperwork for that is in middle of, I think it's middle of February or early March. Yep, we have time to do it right.
Or anything, does anybody have an opinion, anything that's just off the table in, in their minds?
It's not, I was, the IO is off the table in my mind.
But is it?
Remodeling the IO building is off the table.
It sounds like too expensive a Band-Aid.
Yeah, it's gonna end up costing. Which I was hoping we could go that route, I don't.
I was too, but it just doesn't look right.
I think it would be, I think it was said it'd be more expensive too.
Well, the thing is, if we did that, all we're doing is kicking the can down the road and we're gonna have to grapple with this later, probably with much larger dollar amounts, so.
So are we, what are we thinking? The same project? Just look at different options.
Different way to pay for it.
And how much further, how much money do we have? Do we have any money to take the design a little bit further so that we know exactly what it is by the election time?
Uh, so we haven't, we haven't put any money in our budget today to do that. So we would have to, if you wanted to do that, we would have to do some gymnastics within our budget to, to find the money to make that happen. Um, and probably, you know, do a budget amendment to, to get there, but.
Having solid numbers, I mean, I don't like doing things on estimates. I like solid numbers. And that's just me as I run my, as I help run a business.
Sure.
It makes better to financial decisions.
Yeah.
Uh, involves us in.
Surprises.
Well, also making selections, no, we don't need those finishes. We can go down and finishes. Um, I think we, I think the public has told us that they want us to be involved in the process of making sure we control the cost.
Sure. Yeah. I think that's probably also a good question for, you know, architects that are here of, you know, what does that look like in terms of, you know, ballpark costs to be able to give a design further and how, how far can we get before we can start getting some more certainty?
My sense is speaking just for myself is that we want to pursue the value engineering aspect. Anything we can, any, any, any improvement is an improvement and makes it that much easier to sell. And also, um, what we've been talking about here, which is going for the public safety fee and trying to convince the voters, it's a better way to pay for what we need. That's where I'm coming from.
To the drawings like councillor Shillingham said. Yeah. I like that. I agree.
So. I don't know if they have an answer to the question, but it's a, it's a question that needs to be posed to them.
The city brings out a CMGC, they're the ones that provide the process. And then we work with them and the city to go for an idea to get that customized. So the end result of that is like, yes, confirmation that we achieved a $1.7 million stage, but it never ends up being. And instead of the process to enter, now you got a contractor that's the ones that copied the, the estimate.
So that would typically be through an RFP process or?
Yeah. Yep. We could, we could go through an estimate and not have a, uh, go through the RFP, get a contractor. But it sounds like you guys, uh, are seeing a value of a contractor, so.
Carlos.
Yeah. I think it's important that we, uh, weigh in and work with the police chief. Uh, he's a new police chief and he would know best what it's, you know, what his people would need or would not need. It's important to at least get their advice too.
One who's going to have to live with the results who he's got the most skin in the game.
Just want to revisit my comments from earlier. This is all of a broadcast fishing expedition of trying to figure out how to do this project and what to do. And by no means, I mean, we need to control our costs. And I don't, didn't want to pick on Mark and Jennifer on your, your, your programs that we do. We view, uh, view the value in each of those. But this is a major one. We're trying to get over the hurdle. And so I don't want my words to be misconstrued and taken out of context by anybody. So I just want everybody to know that I really appreciate the work that your departments have done and the money. Uh, Mark, you do amazing gymnastics with the money that you spend in that, and the number of programs and services that you provided out that little building.
Second.
And I think it's really important to, you know, recognize that, that those options were looked at because, you know, the voters will ask that question. Well, did you look at this? And we, we can now say, yes, we did look at that. And, you know, in order for us to do a local option levy, to put up the services that maybe you feel are not essential, um, would cost you, you know, a dollar 13 per thousand, um, which is more than double what it would cost you just to, you know, do a general obligation bond to build a building. Um, that didn't make sense to us to put that question even out to you to, to consider, because that's really a non-starter in, in the minds of the council. All right. Is there anything else? We don't want to leave any questions unasked with the experts that are in the room. Yeah.
Um, just to reminder that some of the cost savings I think are already built into there as far as, uh, when we went on, we went and toured a couple of police stations and, uh, the, like the locker room, for example, not having a female and male locker room, you know, doing combined save space and money as well. So there's already some of that cuts in there.
Yeah. I think the architects did a really good job at, at presenting a design that was, that was cost-effective, right? That took into consideration things that, you know, in a, in a standard building, maybe you don't think about, you know, how to save the money. I think they were very thoughtful in putting together a, a design and a project that met the programmatic needs of the department, while also doing it, you know, in a cost-effective manner. With that being said though, there's still a value engineering exercise that can take place to even reduce that further. And that's what, um, the city will, you know, look to pursue to be able to find a, a more solid number that we can, you know, then, uh, you know, build our public safety building fee option around, um, to then get that out to the voters.
So next steps, when do you think we're all going to have to get together and talk about this again?
Uh, so we'll have to work, uh, to get a CMGC on board. Um, and that, uh, just what the cost of that will be. So you'll probably first come back to the council with, uh, maybe a budget amendment, um, to be able to put some money into a line to pay for that work. Um, so that'll be the first thing that you'll see. Um, and then, uh, as we do that value engineering exercise, um, we'll, you'll get a report on that. So I don't have a timing of what that will look like, probably sometime this fall.
Could we possibly get bids on knocking that building down ahead of time and see if we can keep that up?
Uh, I, I think we, you know, we can certainly look at some of that, but, um, you know, a portion of that building is being used by, you know, our police department today. And so we don't want to, you know, there's, yeah, we're using some of the back portions of it for training and stuff like that. Yeah. We figure since we have the building, we might as well use some of it. So it's not ideal and it's not, um, you know, it's not being heavily used, but there are portions of it that are, are being utilized. So.
Question to come before the work session?
That was kind of obvious, but I just want to thank you guys and Cecilia for the, uh, for the homework that led to this. Thank you.
All right. Well, nothing else. I'll go ahead and.